Like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Southfield Regular Meeting of the Planning Commission for August 25th, 2021. It's conducted via teleconference. To start with, a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper?
Here.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Huntington?
Present.
Mr. Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Mia? I don't see her on. Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Present.
And Mr. Willis?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have a court to conduct business this evening.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on the agenda?
To the Chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
As a move, we approve the agenda as written?
Mr. Martin, approved.
Support.
All right, got a favorable motion by Commissioner Culpepper, supported by Commissioner Martin. We have a roll call vote on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
And Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you do have a approval of your agenda this evening.
Do we have any announcements or communications?
I don't have any at this time, sir.
I'll move on to the public hearings. The first item is PSLU 21-0004.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this item is a special land use request of West Southfield Investment LLC. This property is located on the east side of Telegraph Road, just north of Nine Mile Road. Now, this is the existing McVie's Restaurant site that has been vacant for some time now. Property is located at 23380 Telegraph Road. Current zoning of the property is I-1 Industrial, and the special use request this evening is to use the property for warehousing of auto parts and then the parking of vehicles on the rear lot. This is a close-up of the property itself. The property for which the Planning Commission is doing the review is the one that is squared off in red. The petitioner also owns the property directly to the north. This is where he currently has his auto detailing, auto service business. And basically, what he's looking to do is to expand into the property directly to the south, again, for use of the property for storage, not only of parts, but again, storage of vehicles on the site. As I had already noted, the property is zoned I-1 Industrial, and it is part of the Telegraph Road Technology Corridor from a future land use standpoint. This is a copy of the of the site plan or the plan itself. Keep in mind that the only thing that you are making a recommendation on this evening is the special land use. So again, that would be the use of the property for warehousing and parking. We will handle the the site plan administratively because this is industrial zone. So again, while we do have a site plan up here to show you how the property will be used, should it get approved by council, not only for the special land use, but the site plan basically will go through the process administratively with approval by the city planner. But it does at least indicate all the the items that we would typically ask for site plan, including some new landscaping, the the parking lot being striped properly with barrier-free spaces, bike racks, et cetera. This is a floor plan for the interior of the property. Both the basement plan and then the first floor plan shows the open stock room, as well as a small office. Elevations of the property, and again, not much will change on the outside, at least from a facade standpoint. And with that, the petitioner, Mr. Farnar Salama, is on the the call this evening. And Farnar, if you could, again, like you did a week or so ago, just kind of give us an overview of how you plan on using the property, and then we will proceed from there.
Sure. So, this is Farnar Salama. Just like Jeff was explaining to gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen, the building is going to be used as a warehousing, like we store some parts in there, just for our business next door. And then, on the back end of the parking lot, we want to use it for parking, for employee, for cars that overflow, that stays there overnight, and just store cars in the parking lot, basically, to for our business right next door. And we are planning on putting the iron gate, as is says in the site plan, just towards the end of the building, just to kind of keep it separated from the hotel next to us, next to that property, and to keep our vehicles and customer vehicles safe, if they were left overnight. That's pretty much the whole idea of what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing at this time. Jeff, could you give the information on how to call in? Thank you.
Yes, I will. Thank you, sir. So to the public listening, either online or watching on cable, the slide that is up right now has the pertinent information on it, should you have a comment with regard to the special land use. And again, what the Planning Commission is is making a recommendation on this evening is just the use of the property for warehousing and parking, and nothing more. That is, that's what's before the PC this evening. So the telephone number to dial in is 1415-655-0001. And then, when prompted, the code to put in is 179-217-4784. And then, you'll be prompted to to hit the pound sign twice. So again, for for those who are listening online or watching, now is your opportunity to comment on this particular special land use. You would have three minutes in order to to make your comments, and we would ask that you provide us both with your name and address for the record. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be watching the lines here to see if anyone calls in, and then I will be back with you in a minute or so.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't appear that we have anyone calling in with regard to this particular special land use.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and open up to the commission for any questions or comments.
To the Chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
Well, let me say, as I said in the previous study meeting, Mrs. Lama, thank you for taking on that building. That is a very nice building. It's been a standing starwood building for quite some time when it was a restaurant. So knowing that you're going to take it over and use it to help your business next door is an attribute to the city. So again, thank you for staying in the city, and I know you will do the proper landscaping out there to make that area even more handsome than it is. And I really like the idea of having that extended fence that comes along the north side of that building and the south side, primarily the south side, which separates that parking area and that building from the hotel. So again, I think that's a added plus to the city, and thank you for staying in the city, and I wish you a lot of luck in this proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Rob Willis.
Go ahead.
Just one comment. It just makes sense. They're next door, they're parking, they need the space. It is zoned appropriately, so it just makes sense to me. So I wish you all the best on the on the property.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
This is Gerald Stevens Gunn.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, I support this project. I'm excited about it, and I am in agreement with my fellow commissioners, wish you the best of luck in moving forward with your business.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Commissioner Huntington?
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, yeah, again, I think the special land use makes a lot of sense. I think it's good for the city of Southfield, what's happening here. Again, I hate to see McVie's leave. They've been around a long time. I think people really enjoyed them. But what you're doing there, and once you get the place all fixed up, I think it's going to be good for the city.
Sure.
It fits in with our general standards, as far as size and character. So I think it's, you know, I'm all for it. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
I think the vote for approval will demonstrate that we all feel that this is a good idea for you and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I guess, everybody, I agree. I will say, it's very lucky when the when the extra space you need opens up next door to you, and someone is densely populated at Southfield. So, good luck. I I think, you know, it's obviously a good use, and it fits all the zoning standards, as everybody else said. With that, we have a recommendation.
Through the chair, before you go to recommendation, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Is, are, is your new parking area that you're going to use for storage, is that going to be closed to the public?
Yes.
So during site plan review, you'll have to provide some details on gates and fencing?
Okay.
You're going to have a fence along this south property line between the former McVie's and the hotel?
Yes.
Okay.
But not, not all the way to the, it shows right, it shows right here.
I I'm having a hard time seeing it.
Okay.
Such a small print. And we will cover these items during the site plan review, but because it's a special land use, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Sure.
This is going to be storage for your facility. There's no public coming to your your warehouse, you know, the former McVie's building, and your site's going to be secure. We'll address those issues during site plan review.
Sure.
Okay, and what is your current hours of operation?
Nine to seven, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday?
Yes, sir, nine to seven.
And you're closed on the weekends?
Yes.
So typically, with special land use, we do have hours of operation that is is part of the approvals. So with that, Mr. Spence, just make sure that those hours of operation are included in the final recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, we should probably mention that would have an option to be open on the weekends if they chose. I don't know if that would affect this, because since it's going to be part of the approval, or if you if you never want to be open. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Terry.
Well, if if they were, if they had public coming, yes, I would agree, similar to some of the other ones that, you know, they wouldn't want to limit themselves on the weekends. But if they're not open for operation on the weekends, then I would say be consistent with their current operation.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, we have the recommendation, planner's recommendation?
Yes, we do. With regard to PSLU 21-0004, the planning department recommends favorable recommendation of the special use request of Farnar Salama of West Southfield Investments LLC to use the existing building for parking and general storage, and construct a fence on the property located at 23380 Telegraph Road, Civil Parcel 2428351038, on the east side of Telegraph Road between Nine Mile and Ten Mile, for the following reasons: Subject to approval of PASP 21-0024 by the city planner. Submitted special use with any conditions recommended by the planning department and the planning commission will be of such size and character that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the I-1 Industrial zoning district. Location, size, intensity, and periods of operation of the proposed use is designed to eliminate any possible nuisance likely to emanate therefrom, which might be adverse to occupants of any nearby permitted use. Proposed use is in accord with the spirit and purpose of the chapter, and is not inconsistent with or contrary to the objectives sought to be accomplished by this chapter and principles of sound planning. Proposed use is of such character and vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to surrounding land uses or adjacent thoroughfares. Proposed use is of such character and intensity and range on the site, so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, dirt, glare, odor, or fume. Proposed use will not be adverse to the promotion of the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The proposed use is designed and operated so as to provide security and safety to employees and the general public. And hours of operation shall be from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
This is Commissioner Rob Willis.
Yes.
I would move for a favorable approval of PSLU 21-0004.
Commissioner Culpepper? Stevens Gunn, I support.
All right, we had a lot of people there. We're going to go with favorable recommendation by Commissioner Willis and supported by Commissioner Stevens Gunn. I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Huntington?
Support.
Mr. Martin?
Support.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Support.
Mr. Willis?
Support.
Mr. Culpepper?
Support.
And Mr. Griffith?
Support.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, you do have a favorable recommendation for PSLU 21-0004.
Okay, thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, moving on to the next item is UZR ODD 21-0002.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this request is for a vacant piece of property, 8.1 acres of land, which is directly across the street from City Hall. For a while now, it's been it's been known as the Ever Center Property. The petitioner, Hassan Jawad, representing Middle Point Investment Group, is is the petitioner for for this particular proposal this evening, for an overlay development district on that particular piece of property. It would retain the the RC zoning, however, it would have an overlay development district over the top of it. The property located at 26111 Evergreen Road, on the northwest corner of Evergreen and Civic Center Drive. The proposal for the overlay development district is for the construction of a mixed-use development with retail, office, and multiple family units in multiple phases. The photo that is currently on the screen is is a rather historic photo, only because in the foreground, the 5,000 town square is not shown there. Now, so this is a photograph from some time ago. It does show how the property was developed at one time with three office buildings. We did, only because this is the the city center area, and in because of our wish to promote walking, not only walking or biking, but, you know, less use of vehicles within the city center area, we did show pedestrian travel circles on this site. Within the the blue area, the circle that's there, that is a quarter-mile radius, which basically is a five-mile walk and a two-minute bike ride. The green circle is a half-mile radius, which is a 10-minute walk and a four-minute bike ride. And basically, we use this to show how accessible this property actually would be to the general public, should they choose to walk or bike to this particular location. So the close-up look of the property, the area in the middle that's green, that is currently landscape area lawn. It does have a bit of a depression in it as well. And if you recall, Mr. Jawad had pointed that out last week, that this was actually an area where part of the building was. So there is a little bit of a depression there right now. The balance of the property is actually surrounded by pavement, which was actually the old parking lot for the office building. As I noted, property is zoned RC, Regional Center, and it is within the city center subarea. The next series of slides I'm going to show you are the various phases that are are being proposed. The first phase would be an 8,900-square-foot retail center that would be on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Evergreen Road. Directly to the north of that is a retail A, which is a 2,250-square-foot standalone building with a drive-through. You will notice that both of these buildings will have drive-throughs on them. So this would be the Phase One portion of of this particular proposal. Phase Two, at least Phase Two A, would show some additional retail along Civic Center Drive and a park directly to the north. Two B kind of switches it up a little bit and replaces the the retail with the medical office building. Two C retains the retail with another future retail instead of the park. Going to to three, Phase Three A, again, is retail as well. The variant for Three A would be Three B, which is actually a larger retail, but you also notice that that single tenant drive-through also is not shown here. Four A includes residential units. Four B, medical office with parks on either side. Four C includes a medical office as well as walk-up unit for multiple-family residential. Four D actually includes more single or multiple-family residential with just the the two retail buildings along Evergreen. Five shows retail buildings in lieu of residential, although there is one portion of residential on the corner of Central Park and Civic Center Drive. And then, Phase Six indicates retail as well as the the multiple family. Just want you though to focus that that mainly Phase One is is the the phase that the petitioner is strictly looking at. The additional phases, obviously, because over time, things could change, and I'm sure that Mr. Jawad will get into that in a little bit when I'm done. But at least it provides for other opportunities of of various types of development as time goes on, as things change, as we know that they do, that I'm pretty sure that we have the retail across the frontage, but the balance of the site could change significantly, and he just wanted to show the various types of development that could happen over the years to come. I'm showing a series of of bird's-eye views of the properties and possibly what they could look like. Again, going to Phase One, that is in the red area here. This is the Phase One site plan. And again, you aren't you aren't making a recommendation on the site plan tonight. That will come to you at a later date. Basically, you are looking at the overall master development plan, as well as the overlay development district development agreement. But this is what Phase One could look like. Pocket park with the retail, and again, this is the frontage along Evergreen Road. Retail elevations. And then, streetscape elements. You can see that the signage plan view, that schematic, is basically on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Evergreen Road. And then, the pos, and then, kind of a an elevation of of what the streetscape along Evergreen Road would look like. With that, as I had noted, Mr. Hassan Jawad is online, along with members of his team. So, Mr. Jawad, if you would like to kind of fill in some things that maybe I had missed, now is your opportunity to do that, sir.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and the planning staff. Thank you for your time this evening. Jeff, I think-
To the Chair, we'd have him speak up. We can't hear him.
I'm sorry. How about now? Is that any better?
A little better, a little louder. Thank you.
No worries. So I think Jeff actually did a pretty good job in in taking everybody through what it is that we're envisioning for the entirety of the site, as well as what we anticipate to follow behind the ODD agreement in our Phase One plan. You will see numerous variations for future phases of the plan, and that's us trying to have contingency plans and be prepared, and anticipate changes as they may occur in building- and building them into our ODD, so we don't necessarily have to, uh, come back, uh, later on to, uh, to, to make any changes. Uh, ultimately, um, i- i- it's, it's always easier to design a site when you know who your tenants are going to be. And, uh, uh, as we move forward, we are doing our best to, to fill in those blanks so that we are not, uh, staring at empty space as we, uh, as we move forward. Um, I'm, uh, I'm open to any questions or comments, uh, that anybody, uh, may have, uh, at this point.
Uh, through the chair, I, I recommend we ho- hold our public hearing first and then go to the commission and staff for questions and comments.
Okay. No problem. Uh, Hassan, you're, you're finished for now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so again, for the public who, uh, may be listening or watching on cable, um, the information is on the screen right now. Uh, dial one four one five six five five zero 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 one, and then when prompted, put in the code one seven nine two one seven four seven eight four. Uh, once you do come into the meeting, we ask that you, uh, do provide your name, uh, and address for the record, and then you will have three minutes then to make your comment. Um, so again, anyone who is, who is listening or, or watching online, um, now is your opportunity to, to dial in and comment, uh, on this overlay development district proposal. And, Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, watch the attendee list, and we'll give it about a minute or so, and we'll see if anyone, uh, has any comments, and I'll be back with you in a minute.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it does not appear that we have, uh, anyone for public comments this evening, uh, for the PZRODD.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Uh, open up to the Planning Commission for questions or comments.
Hey, it's, uh, Commissioner Huntington.
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering, uh, is there any green initiatives going on with this project?
Clicker on mute, Hassan, can't hear you.
Sorry about that, yes, I was. Uh, as we, as we move forward into the, uh, the site plan, uh, process, uh, uh, that is, uh, going to be something that we're going to be, uh, exploring.
Okay. So at this point, there's nothing really in the plans, but that's something you want to look at in the future, you're saying?
It's, 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 it's something we plan on looking at, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, I'll be looking forward to, you know, seeing what you come up with.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, do you have any specific tenants set up for the first phase at this time?
We do have, we do have some prospective, uh, tenants lined up for, uh, for Phase One, uh, that, uh, we are in the process of, of working through the details of leases with, that's correct.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is-
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Culpepper.
Uh, Hassan, as I said in the previous meeting, I, um, I think this is a great proposal, uh, starting with Phase One, we're starting out on Evergreen and Civic Center. It'll give the, our drive-bys, and if you have something to see, the same thing we did at Northland. This is a great project, it's laid out well in the phases that people can see what's going on. And personally, I think you're providing a service that the residents of the city will greatly appreciate it, and you're doing it step by step by step. So again, appreciate you for your consideration for staying in Southfield and doing business here, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Commissioner Rob Willis. Um, I, I, let me first of all acknowledge, this is a well thought of, well laid out, um, plan. But, uh, I think my first question is, Mr. Spence defined the area as within, I think, a half a mile or a mile within biking, and, and I am looking at, are there any biking accommodations on this, um, diagram at all? I can see cars, but it looks like pedestrian, potential for de- uh, for pedestrian biking conflict?
If, if I could jump in, uh, through the chair, the, um, all of the perimeter pathways will be eight to ten feet wide, shared use, that'll be, um, accessible to both bicyclists and pedestrians. They have provided the required pedestrian connectivity from the main walk to the main parts of the building, and each phase of the development will require bike parking. And some of those details, it will, um, will be focused on during your actual site plan review. But this, uh, whole ODD concept, Mr. Huntington, uh, and others, is, it has, you know, be sustainable. It has to promote green infrastructure, it has to be pedestrian friendly, bicycle friendly, it has to integrate with the public transit. And that, these are all the tools, um, that we have utilized in other overlay development districts, and to allow for the greater density, these are the trade-offs that the developer has to provide. And I can tell you, as, as someone who's personally been involved in, uh, expanding our bicycle pedestrian network, that, um, we have seven point seven five linear miles of dedicated bike, um, lanes, of, of off-road pathways immediately adjacent to this facility. We just recently put up one quarter mile, um, trail markers along the pathway, and everything that we have done to the date will be incorporated and connected to this development. So some of it will be borne by the developer, and, and a lot of it is, of the infrastructure has been put in place over multiple years in the public realm. And of all places in the city, I can, I can honestly attest that this will be pedestrian and bike-friendly and bike-connected.
Okay. Okay. Um, this is Commissioner Willis, again, I do have another concern, and, um, and I'm not sure, again, this is, this is a major minor concern. And that is, I think it's an extremely appropriate layout for today, and, and I understand the need that it, it has to be able to sustain itself. But I think we have just a few opportunities to have a real walkable downtown. And I'm not sure how many more opportunities we'll have to have. And I think the expression, uh, that I heard last, uh, last meeting was the zero lot line development, uh, the kind of thing where people will just kind of walk and bump into each other where you go when you have no other place to go. I am not sure if I see that here. Um, again, I, I think it's extremely appropriate, extremely well thought out, but the notion of it being a, a people magnet, where you're just kind of meandering around, I'm not sure how I feel about it, you know? Okay, that, that's my comment.
Uh, yeah, and I, I'd like to, uh, actually, uh, thank you, Mr. Willis, Commissioner Willis, uh, uh, for your feedback. It's, it's really appreciated, and, and, uh, I, uh, feel wholeheartedly, uh, the, the same way that you do about both instances, both the, uh, uh, making the site pedestrian-friendly, incorporating bike racks as well as bike-share, uh, services, uh, where, uh, we can. Um, at each interval of this development, we will, uh, we will look to incorporate, uh, the bike racks.
Can you get off of the site plan and go back to the overall concept plan that shows the, the road right through the middle, where it shows all the pedestrian connectivity? I don't, I don't want to focus too much.
And, and so, um, you know, outside of the, uh, the bike racks and, and bike-sharing service and so forth, we, we look to add in the oversized, uh, sidewalks as well as pedestrian covering and so forth and so on. So we're going to do our best to make this as pedestrian-friendly as, as we possibly can. In regards to your comment, uh, that you have made in the previous meeting as well regarding the zero lot line, um, I, I totally, uh, understand that, uh, as well, and I believe that as we move further, uh, into this project, based upon some of the conceptual, uh, uh, phases that we've provided, uh, we will, uh, address that and, and, and create that, 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 uh, that pedestrian, uh, friendly place where you can meet and bump into others and, and, uh, and gather. Um, but because of, of, as I had mentioned previously, uh, uh, the limited frontage that we necessarily have with the, the, the triangle portion of this site that's cut off, that belongs to the Etkin property next door where the Chipotle is, it really limits, uh, our ability, uh, to, uh, to accomplish that for a number of, of, of reasons that I, I won't go into today. But, uh, I share the same vision, uh, that you do, and, uh, have been working this site for quite some time, and as an owner of, of a number of other developments in the city center, uh, corridor, we're not going to put anything here that we don't feel is, is, is going to succeed. But, uh, rest assured, as, as we move forward with, uh, the project, I think, uh, uh, we will address, uh, uh, the, the item that you're talking about, uh, having, in regards to having a kind of a, a, a main drag or a main street type feel.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
I think development of that corner and that area is well deserved and well needed. Uh, I believe we asked a question about the, uh, residents in the Five Thousand Tower, if they knew anything of the development or had any input or comments, uh?
If, if I may through the chair, um, they were sent, um, notice of this particular meeting. Um, personally, I have, I have not either heard from them nor have they written in, um, but they were notified that this particular project, uh, was coming. Uh, I also know that because this is a city center area, and, and Mr. Jawad, you can, you can confirm this, I believe that Five Thousand Town Square is, uh, in attendance at City Center Advisory Board meetings, and that they were, uh, also well aware that this project was coming and actually had, uh, various proposals brought to the City Center Advisory Board in which, at which time, um, they could make comments on it.
You, you are correct, we have, uh, uh, through the City Center Advisor, where we have shown, um, our, our plans, uh, twice, uh, now, and I have had some conversations, uh, with, uh, Mr. Peterson, who is the president of the Five Thousand, uh, Town Center, uh, residential complex. But I, I also intend to, uh, to reach out prior to, to rolling through the site plan approval process and, uh, in getting, uh, any additional feedback or maybe, uh, posting something with the residents there so that, uh, uh, they are, uh, a part of this, uh, of this project as opposed to just being told what it is that we're looking to do. And that's, that's been our approach in anything we've done in the City Center corridor throughout the years is, is, uh, is we, we don't want to tell you what we're going to do, we, we, we want, we want the community to be a part of what we are doing. And, uh, and that would be the plan, uh, as we continue to move forward into all phases.
This is Gerald.
I wasn't, I haven't finished with my questions, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Martin.
Sorry, uh. At present, the city uses, when they have large events, they use the, uh, that area for parking. Will that be, uh, something that can continue during your initial development?
So, uh, we've, we've continued to allow, uh, uh, as long as the, the site is vacant and prior to us doing any sort of, uh, of work on the site, uh, we have allowed the use, uh, of the site for DTE vehicles, uh, parking for the Kenny Horn Jazz event that recently occurred. Uh, there's been a number of, uh, uh, car events that have occurred, uh, as well. Uh, but, uh, you know, once we get to the point where we do start, uh, a break grounders construction on the site, that most likely is going to stop. But until then, yes, the site is available.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Stevens gone?
Sorry about that, Mr. Martin.
No problem.
Uh, I'd like to find out, when do you plan to commence? Uh, should this go through the city council and everything is approved, when you, uh, plan to commence starting? And the reason why I ask is that, um, recently, I, uh, was on Northland Drive, and I saw the portables, and I saw, you know, some heavy equipment, and as a resident of the community, I got excited. So I'm quite certain that other residents, once they see, uh, little visibility that things are happening on that corner, they too will be excited. So when, 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 when do you plan, what's your timeline on that?
So, uh, site plan Phase One is, is going to come before you, uh, in October, uh, October thirteenth for your first study session. Uh, so as quickly as, uh, as we can go through that process and then move on to council and get site plan approval, um, you know, uh, we, we could have, uh, uh, activity on the site, uh, uh, beginning of, uh, of two thousand twenty-two. There's a fair amount of, uh, of site work and underground work that's going to, to have to be, uh, that's going to have to be done. But, uh, if we can get in, and we say to, to planning in October, uh, and get it before council in, uh, in November, and then go through an engineering review, uh, obviously, we're hitting the holidays at that point. So I'd say early two thousand, uh, early two thousand twenty-two is, uh, is when we would expect to, uh, to start activity on the site. We're, we're anxious to, uh, start moving forward.
Uh, do you have any other comments, Commissioner Stevens gone?
Um, I think that's a great idea, but can you put a bulldozer just sitting there? That would be real, that would be kind of cool.
Well, we do, we do have, we do have some, uh, uh, some leasing signs with some renderings that are out there already that have been out there for, uh, at least the past three months. So, uh, but no, I, I, I don't, I don't go to spare bulldozers that are on the site. But, uh, uh, early two thousand twenty-two is, uh, we'll, we'll, we should be ready to roll.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Well, I'll, uh, I think it's a nice project. I, I do wish we had a, a big prominent building on the corner of Evergreen and Civic Center. I understand the site is, is tight. So what I'm, what I'm holding on hope for is that this is so popular that you build the very tall dense buildings at the Central Park Boulevard, which will be a different focus. So I, I think the, the Phase One in and of itself i- i- is a nice development, and you put the additional features in, um, you know, some things that you have in your other buildings across the street, some things are improvements. Um, I think the, uh, the small freestanding building idea and that weird kind of clipped corner of the site, uh, is going to be a good fit and with the park, and, uh, there'll be a lot of activity around that type of place, hopefully, and, and get people through the rest of the site. So I, I know you've been here a lo- So I know you've been here a long time. You've been here as long as I have on the street. Probably you were here before I was here. A lot of things have changed in 21 years that I've been inside of this green circle on this one diagram here, which is pretty cool. It's, there used to be nowhere for me to go without getting in a car. And now there's a lot of places to go, bikes, walking, everything like that. That's exciting. And it gets really exciting as more and more people film the area. You know, Lawrence Tech keeps growing. Everything is kind of coming together. So I, I'm excited to see this keep moving forward. And I've got two screens always going here, so I keep looking at the aerial photo. And there's such a heavy, strong precedent of these buildings that sat way back off the streets in the middle of Caesar parking that it's hard to get started over. You can't redevelop the entire city, you know, by moving all the buildings up to the front lot lines, although I think that would be nice in certain situations. It's, you know, you're going with what's already there but improving on it. So I think it's, it really is a good layout for the site, especially when the whole site comes together with all the different options, which are all seems appropriate options. And usually, once you get enough, once you get a few buildings, you get the momentum and the tenants appear out of nowhere that we're all kind of hanging back waiting for the right location, which is a goal, which is, you know, bulldozer moving dirt's exciting. But when the steel stands up and you get that first tenant sign to go on the building, it's, you know, all these other tenants kind of fall into place. It's a awesome thing to see come together. I think it's going to be, it's going to be good. Any other comments from the Commission? Or we go to the... All right, it sounds like we're ready for the planners' recommendation.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments first before Mr. Spence reads. Can you go back to that concept plan? I've been here 11 years. This past Monday, I've been staring out at vacant parking space for my entire tenure. I believe the buildings were torn down half a year before I started here. And I've always said that this is the linchpin for all of the public realm and reinvestment redevelopment in the city center. And I agree with the Chair that we have 60 years of precedent with buildings set back and sea of asphalt. And it's just too difficult to change that pattern. But we can make it more pedestrian friendly, can make it more bike friendly. We can integrate public transit. What I like about this development is the series of small pocket parks that can be used by individuals, business residents on a daily basis or can be used for special programming. The Eat to the Beat concert and some of the food trucks, they might have a small venue here. We probably relocate them in front of City Hall. When we built, rebuilt Evergreen Road, we built that mid-block crossing with the anticipation that someday this 8.18 acres would be redeveloped. The fact that it's got mixed use, it's got residence built right in. And if you look, if you leapfrog west with Arbor Lofts and all of their potential residential redevelopment, it's a no-brainer that people are going to walk across the street of Central Park Boulevard to come and visit this place and not get in a car and drive. We've seen tremendous growth in our pedestrian activity. Even though I'm not personally involved in the slow ride, I take pride that we have over 150 bike riders every Thursday. They get together at the library and they go out and they bike. And it's because we've built the infrastructure year in and year out and we keep adding to it. And again, I think this is going to be the centerpiece of all the good work that we've done. We don't have a traditional downtown, but that doesn't mean we can't have the amenities for pedestrians. And, you know, I've used the term, this is probably a park-in-and-walk scenario, where people may park at their businesses or here at City Hall or at their homes, but then walk either within this development or to this development. I think Mr. Griffiths is just a stone throw away. He's very walkable and bikable. 5,000 Tower residents, Arbor Loft residents, the various neighborhoods that we have surrounding here. I think the opportunity for people to safely walk to this facility is all here. And if we look back where we were 10 years ago, I couldn't say that with all honesty that people could get here safely. So I'm very excited about this development. Again, I'm hopeful that Phase One will break ground next spring and the rest of the development will follow, you know, in sequence. I wouldn't be doing my job, though, if I didn't, again, point out that currently, the way the ODD is designed, the city center district does not allow for freestanding drive-through buildings. So what we did is we built in some qualifiers and conditions that Mr. Spence is going to read into the recommendation that we don't get the one-story freestanding fast-food drive-through, that it has to be integrated into a larger development of eight acres or greater. It can't be a standalone without other phases of development, such as the retail being built. Architecturally, it has to be compatible with the rest of the development, that the drive-through window ordering is not visible from any of the main streets, that this pocket park is developed in conjunction with the freestanding drive-through. So I just wanted you to be aware that that's part of our recommendation qualifiers for this particular development, which is different than other ODDs that we've done. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we can go to Mr. Spence's recommendation.
Hearing none. Jeff, do you have your recommendation, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with regard to PZR ODD 21-0002, the Planning Department does recommend favorable consideration to rezone 8.18 acres of property to ODD Overlay Development District with underlying RC Regional Center and create a master development plan and agreement to allow for the development of a mixed-use development for retail, office, and multiple family units and other site amenities and multiple phases for the following reasons. Proposal shall be consistent with the surrounding zoning classifications and is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Plan that indicates city center subarea for this parcel. Proposal utilizing the ODD Overlay Development District provisions with underlying RC Regional Center zoning will allow the petitioner to market the properties for redevelopment with mixed-use land uses compatible with the abutting existing development and will allow for development flexibility in accordance with the attached ODD Development Agreement. Proposed zoning will not have adverse effects upon any of the adjoining zonings or land uses. The petitioner is to work with the Planning Department and city attorney to finalize the Overlay Development District Development Agreement, including streetscape and furnishing details that will be subject to approval by the city planner. Petitioner is to seek approval for Phase One site plan as well as each subsequent phase from the Planning Commission and the city council. For a mixed-use unified development of eight acres or greater, one single tenant drive-through building may be permitted if it meets the following condition. The drive-through ordering station and pickup window is not visible from the major thoroughfare, in this case, Evergreen Road, Civic Center Drive, or Central Park Boulevard. A building, decorative wall, and/or landscaping may be used to screen the ordering station and pickup window. The 2,250-square-foot single-tenant drive-through building shall be constructed at the same time as the 8,900-square-foot retail center in Phase One. The architecture shall match other retail buildings within the mixed-use development. The Pocket Park Urban Plaza shall be constructed immediately adjacent to the single-tenant drive-through building facing Evergreen Road. And the height of the building shall be a minimum of 20 feet. That concludes this report.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, entertain a motion?
To the Chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper.
Yes.
I recommend favorable approval for PZR 0DD21-0002.
This is Commissioner Willis.
Support.
Mr. Huntington?
I've got a favorable recommendation by Commissioner Culpepper. It was supported by Commissioner Willis first. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Martin?
Port.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Support.
Mr. Willis?
Support.
Mr. Culpepper?
Support.
Mr. Huntington?
Support.
And Mr. Griffiths?
Support.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you do have a favorable recommendation for PZR ODD 21-0002.
All right, thank you.
Good luck, Hassan. I know you'll do a great job.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your support and are excited and looking forward to working with you all on the future phases as we move forward.
Take care.
That's great.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you again soon for more phases.
All right. Don't have any site plans tonight? Next item would be approval of the minutes.
This is Commissioner Rob Willis. I don't recall receiving minutes. I might have missed it.
Does anyone else confirm that? I thought that I had sent the minutes last Friday along with the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I received them.
Commissioner Culpepper, I did receive the minutes from you and also from the clerk. So yes, I have two sets of minutes. I have received them. Thank you.
And I also received...
I received them as well.
Yeah, Huntington also received the minutes.
Was there anyone who would like to make a motion on the minutes?
Yeah. Yeah. You're on mute, Commissioner Martin?
I'm just trying to go through and find the correct date for the minutes. I believe they were July 11th and July 25th.
July 14th and July 28th.
Yeah, 14th to 28th.
I motioned we make, have approval of the minutes of the July 14th and 28th meeting as provided.
Commissioner Culpepper, support.
All right, we've got a favorable motion by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Culpepper on the minutes. We have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Support.
Mr. Willis?
I did not, I do not have them. I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Culpepper?
Support.
Mr. Huntington?
Court.
Mr. Martin?
Port.
And Mr. Griffiths?
Support.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you do have approval for your minutes this evening.
Thank you. Next item is the public comment portion of the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, for those who are currently either listening or watching online, this is the portion of the meeting in which you can make public comment to the Planning Commission. The rules of procedure are currently shown on the slide. The telephone number and the code remain similar to what they were for the other public hearings. So you would call 1-415-655-0001. And then, when prompted, put in the event number 179-217-4784, followed by two pound signs. So again, to the public, should you wish to make a public comment at this time, please call that phone number, enter the code in. Then, once you are admitted into the meeting, please provide your name and address for the record. And then you would have three minutes to make your comment. Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, there's a little bit of a delay between this live portion of the Planning Commission and what's shown online and on cable. So we'll wait a minute or so and we'll see if anyone has any comments. If we do have someone, I'll make sure to usher them in. But I'll be back with you in about a minute. And, Mr. Chairman, it does not appear that we have anyone for public comment this evening.
Sorry, couldn't hear you for a second there. Public comment portion is closed. Any miscellaneous items?
The only thing that I have, sir, is that we do have four items for your September agendas. Your first study meeting would be next Wednesday, September 1st.
All right.
And I'm not sure if City Planner Croate has anything additional.
No, I have nothing further added at this point. Thank you.
Okay. See everybody next week. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.